Good morning, everyone. I'm showing a time of 9:00. If we could please take our seats. Good morning. The time is 9:00 a.m. I am calling the Planning Commission meeting for January 13, 2022, to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And while we are waiting for our 9:05 item, if there is any citizen's input, feel free to approach the podium. That would be anything you'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda. Good morning, Jake. Is there any hands in the Zoom room?
No, there are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. I do have someone in chambers. And just, it's not pertaining to an agenda item for today?
It's not pertaining to the agenda item. It's related to the industry.
As a whole?
Yes.
All right.
And I've got a bone to pick with the Planning Commission, too, but we'll talk about that.
Okay, so just be sure.
My name is Randy, I'm sorry.
Hey, you know the drill. So first and last name.
My name is Randy Pleger. I live out on Butts Canyon Road, across from this, the agenda item, Mr. Sonny. Anyway, it doesn't matter. I like the gentleman. I'm not attacking his position. I'm not any of that. What I am attacking is the preferential treatment that this board has been giving cannabis growers. Number one, I'm going to explain, I have two instances where I was lied to by this panel, by, well, Victor Fernandez is your representative, correct?
Believe he, I'm not allowed to answer questions, but...
Victor Fernandez is...
He's a planner.
Okay, but he was my go-to man for this situation. This is about a year ago now, a year ago before the permits were issued. I made a complaint about them. You see, they were supposed to obey the law. They're not supposed to be doing things outside of the law. Well, this gentleman that I'm talking about, and I have a court case, so I'm not going to mention his name, had had multiple plants in buckets ready to be planted. It's a direct violation of what this thing is all about. You gotta obey the rules. Okay, Victor Fernandez, okay, I also complained about how they put in the brand-new road and how it was going to cut off water drainage from my place. Okay, and it has. I've got a field now that is between four and six inches of water on it. I've got a Mustang that goes, well, that's her spot. Well, she's injured now because of that, because the water is staying there, which really, really prompted me to get angry. I mean, I'm really angry. And I look back at my case, and I found an email from Victor Fernandez. And it said that he went out and investigated. This is the day after I made my complaint. And he saw no cultivation whatsoever. There's only 400 plants, but he don't see them. I had pictures that I put in front of everybody, anybody that would listen to me. They were date stamped. And I said, hey, that looks like marijuana.
Sir, I recall your earlier comments about this item.
Okay.
And I asked you that day to, if you had brought pictures to go along with your comment, and you had not, you didn't have pictures with you, so we couldn't really respond to your concern at that time.
If you could please speak into the microphones.
Oh, well, I thought I spoke loud enough, but okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, I had the lady that was in charge, the director that was gone. She, I issued her, put it in her hands. She saw the date stamp. She said she would take it. Now, she was the acting member of this plant. Well, let's just forget that for a second. I got other things. Okay, with this water that they've cut off, and this, okay, he said he didn't see any drainage problems. Well, they covered up the culvert. Somebody allegedly poked a hole through this, through this thing, and let water take its course. Okay, I did it. I poked a hole where the culvert was going to be, and the water pressure from all the water that was all over my property took care of the business. But that culvert was buried, and he came out there, and he said he didn't see it. I've got an email, which I will produce, it was kind of comical. I asked about the hoop buildings, because they had two of those on the property.
I hate to, I hate to cut you off. We've reached our three minutes, but if we could just, if you have...
Well, I'd like to finish this point, because this point is very important.
Okay.
Okay, he sits and he looks at the...
Thank you.
His investigations, and he says he goes out there and looks at the hoop buildings, and then he comes back on the email and says that those hoop buildings, 40 foot long, are for flowers and vegetables. 40 foot long, and he's only got hundreds of plants of marijuana sitting in front of it. But those buildings were for flowers and vegetables. I mean, it's a direct violation, and I've got an email that shows that. I'm sorry Victor's not here, because I would like to confront him face to face. I don't talk around anybody's back. What's on my mind comes out my mouth. Thank you, gentlemen, I mean, and ladies, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anything else for citizen's input, not in regards to any agenda items, before I close it and move forward? Jake, any hands in the Zoom room?
No, there are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you. Okay, I'm showing a time of 9:07. We will go ahead and pick up our first timed item. This is a public hearing of a major use permit UP 20-75 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 20-88. The project applicant is North Coast Select Incorporated. They are proposing a co-location slash clustering of permits for cannabis cultivation operation to allow 70,560 square feet of mixed light canopy area within greenhouses equipped for air filtration systems and a total of 168,680 square feet cultivation area. The project includes additional greenhouses for immature plants, a processing facility, a drying building, 32 2,500 gallon water tanks, security, and a perimeter fence. The project is located at 1496 Bell Hill Road, Kelseyville, California, and further described as APNs 017-002-02, 007-10, excuse me, 010-24, and 017-002-01. Good morning, staff. It looks broken. One moment while we get her set up with her mic.
Good morning, commissioners.
So, sorry about that. Okay, so today's agenda, we're going down the list of topics and findings for, I'm sorry. Okay, for North Coast Select Cannabis Cultivation Project. The applicant is seeking, okay, the applicant is seeking approval for a major use permit to cultivate cannabis with a 70,560 square feet canopy area with, within a 168,680 square feet cultivation area within greenhouse structures. The project includes five permit types, as detailed in the staff report, to allow the total canopy area. It is an allowable use under the zoning designation for agriculture and meets the parcel size criteria through co-location and clustering under section 27.13IIJ. The site is within the Big Valley District American Viticulture Area and the Farmland Protection Zone. The project parcel is surrounded by zoning designation agricultural preserve to the north and southeast. And to the east and west of the parcel are designated as agriculture. To the south is rural residential. The surrounding parcel range from 1.35 to 80 acres in size. Several residential areas and off-site residents surround the parcel. However, the nearest is approximately 800 feet from the proposed cultivation site. The site is surrounded by a mixture of agriculture, agricultural industry, and residential dwellings. The applicant is seeking approval for a major use permit to cultivate cannabis with a 70,560 square feet canopy area within 168,680 square feet cultivation area. Due to the location of the project being in farmland protection zone, the applicant will be limited to greenhouse structure equipped with carbon filtration system to mitigate potential pesticide drift and odor. The proposed improvement also include additional greenhouses for immature plants, a 5,000 square feet processing facility with ADA compliant restrooms, 2,400 square feet drying building, 32,250 gallon water tanks for, at each greenhouse structures. The project will use the existing well to pump into the proposed water tank, gravity-fed to the cultivation area through underground water line, and deliver to the plants through drip irrigation method. The projected employees will be approximately 18 during peak season. The project area is currently developed with an existing grape vineyard, existing abandoned single-family residential with septic system, small outbuildings and frost protection agricultural reservoir. None of the existing infrastructure will be used in the proposed operation. The parcel is currently zoned as agricultural industry and historically used as agricultural intensive purposes. A site visit was conducted on October 1 of 2020 with code enforcement to verify existing condition and if it meets fire safety standards. The site location is fully developed with agricultural use since 1993, based on Google aerial footage. However, the applicant noted that the development took place as far as the mid-1980s. To the left, an existing historic ranch was, was, sorry, was built in the early 1900s. However, the improvements of the house made it ineligible for inclusion of, on the state register of historic resources due to the constant upkeep and improvements. Staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the following listed and determined that it is consistent with the Lake County General Plan, Kelseyville Area Plan, and zoning ordinance. Commercial cannabis, sorry, commercial cannabis cultivation is an allowable use within this land use designation and is located appropriately to support the use. The project is located in an existing agricultural area where the practice of cultivation and crop production is primary use under this designation. On July 27, 2021, the Lake County Board of Supervisor declared a local emergency due to the drought condition and requires land use applicants to provide enhanced water analysis under ordinance 3106. The applicant meets the following general plan while satisfying ordinance 3106 by providing the hydrology report and providing a drought management plan, which includes installing a water meter and using a drip irrigation method for conservation. The water storage tanks will be equipped with float valve to prevent overflow and runoff of irrigation water when full. Safety valves will be equipped to supply lines in case the flow of water needs to be stopped in an emergency. The goal of agricultural resources by proposing their project to cultivate cannabis within a greenhouse structure as required by county ordinance 3101 to preserve and protect traditional farming while also diversifying the agricultural production. Land use for maintaining a healthy and diverse local economy for the future of Lake County by promoting economic development through employment opportunity. To ensure the protection of agricultural industry within the county, lands within the farmland protection shall be indoors within enclosed structure equipped with carbon filtration system to prevent movement of odor, pesticide, and other airborne contaminants out of or into the structure. The proposed project meets the goal as a diverse economic base within the agricultural industry. The proposed project meets the Kelseyville Area Plan when it comes to the land use designation for agricultural crop production. The applicant is required to provide and identify ways to increase supplies and implement conservation techniques for irrigation, water irrigation, which is prepared in the project management plan, drought management plan, and a hydrology report. The applicant will utilize water storage tanks and use drip line irrigation. Under goal 5.1A-1, the project is located within an agricultural zone with a base zoning for agricultural industry, which is used for intensive ag use with the surrounding area being agriculture. It is, it is located within an agriculture zone with the ag industry combining district. The surrounding area are agricultural land within a farmland protection zone. Due to the diversity of the crop within the proximity, the project scope meets the requirement of preserving and minimizing potential impacts of the surrounding diverse agricultural use by cultivating within an inclusive structure. The project scope meets the agricultural zoning district due to the allowable use as an agricultural crop, however, is an allowable use under the zoning designation agriculture upon the approval and issuance of a major or minor use permit. The base zoning designation for this project site is agriculture, however, there are several combining districts associated with the parcel. The proposed project proposal does not apply to 28, however, there is an existing residential dwelling property incidental to the project, which is currently not proposed as part of the cultivation operation. Due to the zoning designation and intensive use of agriculture within this combining district, if an occupant decide to utilize the property, they will need to apply for a zoning clearance to reside on the property and shall be required to sign a statement of acknowledgement under Article 28. Staff also wants to note that this district is intended to be applied to properties that are intensively farmed, such as, but not limited to vineyard, orchard, nurseries, fields, and rural crops, and that this district should be applied where restricted agricultural chemicals, as stated under this article, is commonly used. The location of the project does not apply to the requirement as set in Article 36 within a floodway fringe combining district because the proposed cultivation area is outside the designated flood hazard that would include additional regulations set in this article. Article 37 applies to the regulatory setbacks to preserve, protect, and restore significant riparian system, stream, and their riparian aquatic and woodland habitats. The nearest water course is Adobe Creek. Under Article 37, additional requirement includes a 30-feet setback from the water course. However, under Article 27, the project location shall be setback 100 feet from all water course. The project's site location and scope of the project meets all of the additional requirement under the combining district under, I mean, within Article 36, 37, and 28. The initial study found that the project could potentially cause, I mean, could cause potentially significant impacts to aesthetics, air quality, biological resource, cultural resources, tribicultural resources, geology soils, hydrology, hazardous materials, and noise. However, with the incorporated incorporation of the mitigation measures below, all impacts can be reduced to less than significant level with the following mitigation measure in Attachment 6 in the staff report. However, staff would like to address that the mandatory finding of the project analysis, the site location is within a pre-disturbed area used for intensive agriculture for decades. The current agricultural crop existing is a grape vineyard per size. The proposed cannabis cultivation site will utilize less resources than that of a grape vineyard to be removed. The potential impact of crop conversion is similar for any agricultural crop, including cannabis, which is normally exempt. However, the project involves the construction of several buildings and structures, including greenhouses, processing, and drying facility that would otherwise not be exempt. Therefore, the following discussion above the staff report within this section is incorporated to mitigate any potential impacts from the implementation of the project. In addition to the mitigation measures listed in the staff report, the following attachment, the applicant will apply for permits from various agencies, including the Bureau of Cannabis Control, the State Quality Control Board, and any other applicable agency to operate a commercial cannabis cultivation operation. The various agencies include complying with the state regulatory setback requirement and restriction that would then further minimize the potential impact to the environment that are just natural resources. The project scope complies with the minimum regulatory requirements set by the local ordinance to address the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of those working or residing near the proposed use. Prior to the applicant constructing any type of structure, the applicant shall obtain the necessary permits and licenses from appropriate federal, state, and/or local government agencies. Additionally, the community development department would conduct annual compliance monitoring inspection during the cultivation season to ensure compliance with the county ordinance, the approved property management plan, mitigation measure, and conditions of approval. The location and size of the project site complies with the local ordinance regulation regarding use and setbacks. The site is accessed through Bell Hill Road, a county-maintained road with adequate road width. Bell Hill Road and the driveway to the cultivation site have reasonable accommodation with minor improvements, which is part of the condition of approval. The project site will utilize an onsite well and portable toilet until the construction of the processing facility. Additionally, the project parcel has adequate emergency service protection through the Lake County Sheriff's Office, California Highway Patrol, and the Kelseyville Fire Protection District. The applicant is required to adhere to all applicable local, state, and federal regulation, mitigation measures, and conditions of approval intended to ensure the adequate services and maintain a safety at the site. The cultivation of commercial cannabis is a permitted use within agriculture zone district upon securing a major use permit according to Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance. Additionally, the Lake County general plan does not have any provision specifically for commercial cannabis, but both of the general plan and the Kelseyville Area Plan have provision for economic development, water resources, and agricultural resources, land use compatibility. The parcel does not have any outstanding or active violation on the property. Staff also recommends that the approval of the major use permit UP 20-74, the following findings on the previous slide, and the inclusion of the condition upon the approval of the major use permit in Attachment 4. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following action to adopt the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-88 for major use permit UP 20-75 with the following findings found in Attachment 6 and Attachment 4. Bill, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners for staff? Is the applicant here today?
The applicant is here.
Oh, I just was curious.
And they're also on Zoom, too.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions for, regarding the report. On page three of the report, Ms. Ham, there's a table of monthly water use estimates. Is that, are those estimates just for Phase 1 or for the project as fully built out?
Fully built out.
So that's around 1 million gallons a year as fully built out? Okay, thank you. And then on page seven of the report, there's a reference to, the main limitations of this unit are the hazard of flooding in areas adjacent to streams, and this is adjacent to Adobe Creek. And capital improvements on this unit should be built to withstand flooding. Is that the plan, to construct things to be able to contend with flooding? And if the applicant would prefer to answer that?
Absolutely.
Just be sure to state your first and last name for us.
My name's Michael Burleson. I'm the applicant.
One second. Sam, can you hear him? If you could just talk a little closer to the mic.
So then, yeah, we're definitely going to be ready for any sort of flooding. We're doing a foot of over-under excavating and then a concrete slab that all these will be anchored to.
And the report refers to toilets singular and toilets plural. How many toilets are there going to be?
During construction, we're going to have multiple...
Right.
...portpotties.
After construction.
After that, we're going to have multiple bathrooms, but we're going to have one handicap accessible ADA compliant bathroom.
Okay, thank you. And then I did have a couple of questions about the agency comments, Attachment 7. And on page 262 of 300, on page 261, there were comments from Lori Schmitz from the water boards about adequate drinking water for employees, based on the number of employees anticipated. Has that been resolved?
We are definitely going to have adequate drinking water. The number of employees that they put was at peak season times. You know, this greenhouse is going to be pretty automated and climate controlled, all that, so we're not going to have that many full-time employees. That's for like, you know, certain times of the year.
No, I'm neutral in the number of employees. I just wanted to be sure that the drinking water requirements...
100% we will. 100% we'll meet all that.
And then on the following page, 262, the staff report said that no adverse comments had been received, but the now-retired former county surveyor Gordon Haggott, in response to an email from the planner, said that the project, including greenhouses and grow area, will take up about seven acres of the property. So with the grow this size, this close to a major creek, and using this much water, I would be hesitant to issue a negative declaration. Did you ever cover that base with Mr. Haggott?
Mr. Haggott assumed that it was a negative declaration, not a mitigated, so he didn't think that there was going to be mitigations in there. I clarified it with him that there is mitigation measures to, for that, for that kind of project.
Great.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields, do you have anything to say to the applicant or to staff before we open it up for public comment?
Yes, I had a question for staff. I was looking over the agency comments, and I'm wondering if you consulted the ag commissioner.
Excuse me?
I don't see, I didn't see any consulting with the ag commissioner. It's clearly an ag district, and I was wondering if.
I didn't get any comments from.
Was he consulted?
From Mr. Haggott?
No, the ag commissioner, the agricultural commissioner.
So Satir, the question is whether or not during our request for review, whether or not the ag commissioner was notified and if any comments were provided.
They were notified.
Speaking your mic, please.
Yeah, they're always notified, but I didn't receive a response from them.
Okay, thank you. And then I had another question. There were a lot of documents that were produced over a period of time, and some of them talk about tree removal, and some of them say there's no tree removal. Are you planning any tree removal?
There's no tree removal from the cultivation site. The only thing we were talking about is tree removal around the house that's not even in use as we continue, but as of right now, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
For, to answer Ms. Fields, so the area of concern was the heritage trees, that they're not being proposed to be removed.
Thank you for clarifying. If we don't, if the commissioner.
I do have another question.
Go for it.
The report refers to the length of construction time, and it's only a matter of months. Is, again, does this report address all four phases or just phase one? And is that reference to the construction time, just the construction time for phase one? Because it seems to me that it would be awfully coincidental if every phase had exactly the same construction time.
If I may.
Sure, of course.
So when we originally put the site plant together, we thought that would be up and running by 2020, hence being done with the final phase by 2024. I think that, is that what you're referring to?
I'm trying to understand whether the report in its entirety addresses all phases all the time or part of it is only addressing phase one. Because then I have a hard time deciding how I could vote on this if it's.
It went to all the phases, but the final date might be pushed back a little bit because of getting started later.
Go ahead.
Well.
If I may.
Again, I'm trying to determine whether the report comprehensively always addresses all the phases and that.
It does.
It does.
Okay. It didn't, it didn't read that way to me. It was confusing. And if it didn't address all four of the phases, I would have a hard time voting for something when it only involves phase one discussion.
We're addressing all of the stages of development, but we're addressing all of the whole, the full development.
Right, I'm trying to understand key middle chip effects, of course.
Commissioners, I think what we're getting hung up on is the word phase. I think you're correct. Sequo does have a specific way of addressing phasing, and phasing is usually when a project's impacts for future parts are unknowable now. So it's, so further sequel review is done in the future, and I can understand where you're getting confused, that if this is in fact a phased project, that implies that this is the case here. And I think so staff should, you could ask staff to clarify what they mean here, whether it's phasing, or if it is simply stages of a project and all of the elements of those stages of that project are knowable now.
If you could pretend I just asked that question.
Yes.
Then repeating everything you just said.
It is stages, it's stages of development, and it is assessed as the full development. So there's no phases.
Thank you.
Stages.
Sure, before we open it for public comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had one question, and I know this is probably just a technical thing that I'm not understanding, but on page 11 of your staff report, it says, "The total cultivation area will be 70,560 square feet with a cultivation area of 168,680 square feet."
It does sound like a canopy area. 70,000 will be the canopy area.
Okay, so when you talk about a cultivation area, what does that mean?
It'll be the area that's, it'll be in an enclosure and in the distinct area. That'll include the greenhouse. So the canopy within the greenhouse, there's more, there's actually more space in the, and that'll be included as a cultivation area. The processing facility is included. Anything that's part of the cannabis operation will be part of the cultivation area.
Okay, so the canopy is limited to 70,000 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If we do not have any further comments for the applicant or staff, I will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item is welcome to approach the podium. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bill Wilson, and you've covered quite a bit of things. And first of all, I'm not totally against this project if, in fact, they do everything they say they're going to do to mitigate all of the problems. My one question is, will the county assure me that they will react to something if the mitigation isn't done, if all of the things aren't completed? The other thing I would question, talking about the agricultural area, and I think with the agricultural commissioner, has said cannabis is not considered an agricultural crop. So we are in an intensive ag area, growing a non-agricultural crop. Does that mean that we can put in many storage later or some, I mean, you know, those are kind of things I think we need to clear up. That's sort of an, and things like in their report as far as 128,000 watts of light they're going to have, they can have motorized black shield. If all of that is going to be installed and operational, you know, I have to say I would be okay with that. But if all of this is not done and maintained, what will the county do to enforce it? Those are some of the things that I have questions about.
Sir?
Did you, okay. This is Mary Darby, the director of CDD, and we do have an enforcement team that will ensure that these, what's requested and required, if approved, will be enforced, and we do have annual inspections on particular properties.
Okay, and.
And sir, also, if you notice anything that you think needs to be brought to the attention of the department, you should certainly weigh in and feel free to do so.
Well, yeah, and I guess it would be on a complaint-driven way to handle this. It's not, I mean, I've heard of inspectors going out and coming back, like this fellow was saying, that they've got all kinds of plants, they come back and report that, and nothing happens. So really, it's going to be a complaint-driven situation to have the county react?
Well, I think you should feel confident that if you report something specific, that that will be addressed specifically.
Okay, because I'm concerned about light, smell, water use, and noise. They're going to have filters, and it's great they're going to have filters. I was curious as what is the noise level of the filters running all day long? You know, there's nothing.
There are ranges established by the county, and they have to be within those decibel levels at certain times of the day.
I haven't seen that in the report yet, is what they have. And to go over water usage, they've taken out seven acres of vineyard, and they say in the report that it was an abandoned vineyard, and it was not, it was producing for over 40 years. The water use for the vineyard of seven acres is about 229,000 gallons per year. That's seven acres. They're putting in 1.3, 1 and 3/4 acres, that's the 70,000. And they're going to be using over 600,000 gallons per acre versus 200,000 gallons per acre. Is this limited to just this size of vineyard? I mean, this size of, it will be no larger than 70,000 square feet of plant. I mean, they've got seven acres, so it sounds like 70,000 acres, 70,000 square feet requires seven acres of vineyard to be removed to equal out the water use. And again, they're saying how the 1 million gallons for 1 and 3/4 acres ends up being about 600,000 gallons of water per acre per year. The vineyard they took out will be using 200,000 gallons per acre per year. So there is a considerable use, but it balances out because they've gone one acre versus the seven acres. And are there any plans for increasing the size of the grow site? That would be one of my questions.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry, this is Mary Darby, and if there are any increases in the proposal, if approved, they would have to come back to my department and actually go through a new use permit to be reviewed. And also, I wanted to enlighten you that we do have a new code enforcement manager that's very exceptional, doing exceptional work, and we are actually hiring code enforcement officers that's only going to be working with cannabis growers. So I'm very confident that we'll be able to stay on top of this.
And they're going to install security, but there's nobody that lives on the property. Who answers the security break if there's a problem, if there's nobody around? It says that, Mike Burleson is a good number, but I don't, I mean, nobody's living around there, so I don't know how that's handled.
So there is a security system that would alert the property owner, and in turn, if there are any concerns, and that the concerns will be addressed to the Department of CDD returning in regards to security.
Okay, so I mean, if, is an alarm system that'll be going until somebody reacts?
That is, yes.
Okay, and they are saying, and they will be held to it, that any outside lighting will be, as far as the, the outside lighting will be all down, shitty, it'll be, nothing shines up into the sky. And again, that can be enforced also.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And as far as odor mitigation, the filters are wonderful and all, but they're saying that the waste will be outside composted, about 4,500 pounds. That's going to make a smell. I'm not sure how they're going to handle that.
Planner Ham, correct me if I'm wrong, but hasn't the applicant agreed to not compost? And instead to take that off-site so that will eliminate that potential source of odor?
Oh, okay, so that is, okay, that, they were saying in the report that it will be composted, but that is now changed?
Right, it's been, the applicant has addressed that.
And because they were saying smell will be mitigated by distance and native vegetation, but I don't understand how that's going to work. There isn't native vegetation there, it's all been cleared when they pulled out the vineyard, and so, but if they're not going to have the stuff on-site, then I guess that takes care of that.
If I may, well, the speaker is looking through his notes. If I may note here that the comment period is not a back-and-forth conversation with the.
Yeah, I was just thinking about how much time we've.
So if commenters do express concerns or they voice questions, and you've noted those after the comments have been concluded, then you can certainly ask staff to clarify if that is a question that you find pertinent and that you would like an answer for that. But it is not a, the time for comments is not a back-and-forth with the public commenters.
Well, thank you for that tutorial. As long as I've been a commissioner, there have been exchanges between commissioners and people asking questions, so that we make sure their questions are in fact answered.
Correct, you can certainly clarify, and ask for clarification from commenters if a question or concern that they have is unclear, but this isn't a time in which the public's concerns individually are answered by staff or the commissioners. If there is a concern that is voiced, that you find to be pertinent for your decision or the information that's presented today, or it brings up a question that you find pertinent, then certainly take note of that. And then you may, as a commissioner, ask staff to clarify and explain. Thank you.
Okay, and the last thing I just was curious about is the water monitoring. They're going to put in water monitoring, or they say monitoring well. The, to put in a monitoring well, it has to be the same depth of the existing well within the cone of influence of the well, but in their own report, they have no idea how deep the existing well is. To put in a monitoring well, you would have to know that. I'm sure the, I'm not sure which route they're going to go, either the monitoring well or the monitors themselves. And that would be just a question I'd like to have answered all that. Otherwise, that's, like I say, I'm not really in favor of, but I am in favor of letting them go ahead with it if all of the mitigation processes are done and maintained. Filters have to be maintained, and they have to be cleaned, so otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this agenda item in chambers?
I'd like to know how the gentleman's questions are going to be answered. Were you taking notes, and are you, is there going to be some specific follow-up if you are the proper person to respond?
Yeah, I can go ahead and follow up.
I'll let.
I've been interacting with.
Is this pertaining to this agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, please state your first.
30 seconds, that's all I need.
First and last name, please, again.
Randy Fletcher.
Thank you.
Anyway, I need to know about this hydrology report. If it's given to the, to the people that it's impacted, and if it has, how come I haven't had mine? I got three cannabis grows right around my next door to me. I haven't heard anything about it. And I've been out of water for four years with all this rain. I, my well is still dry. I'd like to see a hydrology report. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we have one hand raised in the Zoom room, and before calling that person, I would like to remind everyone who has dialed into Zoom that you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. All right, so the hand I have raised up here is from Sufyan. I have allowed you to speak.
Hi, this is Sufyan Hamouda.
All right, thank you, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm the consultant working on this project with North Coast Select, so I would be more than happy to answer any of the questions that Bill had had, if you guys would like to.
Thank you. If you have notes on what the previous questions that were asked, you're welcome to answer those, or we can bring it back to staff to get those answered, Sufyan.
I do, I could address, I think, one of the biggest ones that I took note here for the hydrology and the existing vineyard. So the removal of the vineyard space to accommodate the proposed use is actually going to reduce the amount of water. So the existing vineyard of 46.83 acres, in 2020, used 28 acre feet of water, and that was for the irrigation at Anfrost. With the proposed project, it is going to then be reduced to 36 acres of vineyard, which is a 24% decrease. Given the water usage from 2020, the estimated water usage for the 36 acres will be 21 acre feet, and so that proposed area will actually be less water than what it would be if all of the acres of vineyard had continued. So the hydrology report also addressed the impacts to the neighboring wells, and the area of influence did not impact any of those wells. It also addressed that within a drought year, there was more than adequate amount of water for the proposed use. I believe some of the other questions were regarding the odor and lighting. Odor is definitely going to be mitigated through the fully enclosed structures. I mean, that's the biggest thing for sure. In addition to obviously the fully enclosed structures, the proposed activated carbon filters should and will mitigate almost 100% of any potential odor drift. The lighting will be, will follow all the dark sky regulations of downcasts. It will not be cast upon neighboring parcels, and the greenhouses will have artificial lighting on the inside. However, they will have blackout shades, so there will be no lighting coming from the interior of the structures. Those are most of the comments that I had written down, so if you have any other questions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you. Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room?
No, at this time, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in chambers before I close public comment and bring it back to the commission? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Chairman Chair, opposed to offer a motion?
Yes, please.
Oh, please.
I don't know if there's anyone here who can speak on this, but I'm very concerned about the response from the senior conservation advocate for the Center for Biological Diversity who's very worried about the hitch in Adobe Creek being affected by this. He recommends that a full IRR be conducted before we approve this. I understand that Holly Roberson, who represents Adobe Creek Vineyards, who submitted hundreds of pages and educated me on terpenes and their effect on vineyards, I'd like to understand why her withdrawal was submitted. Were there some mitigations that were? Were there some mitigations that were made, or?
Mike Burleson again. So the whole thing with Holly, they withdrew everything because we had met all their concerns with above and better-than solutions. And the whole thing with the creek, we had an ERI put in originally for the vineyard to get put in, so they did one of those. I don't know if you've been around Adobe Creek, most of the year, there's no water in there. I mean, it's only running right now for like another, maybe, five weeks, then it's dry. So any sort of native fish species, by all means, we're here to protect and help, and we're not gonna have any sort of weird stuff, but that creek isn't really fish-worthy. But Holly, they all, we all met their needs with everything from the odor and lighting and everything else.
So I would recommend that you look up Clear Lake Hitch. It's a threatened species that spawns during a very short period of time in the spring in Adobe Creek. I'm very concerned about it. I'm not sure that I'm ready to approve this without a full CEQA review because of that. I understand from my own personal experience that despite greenhouses having these carbon filtration systems, they still do emit odors. And I'm hearing from wineries that they're rejecting loads of grapes because of this. This is a big threat to our agriculture.
So that whole terpene drift thing for the wineries, there's no scientific proof on? The only study that's close to that's the eucalyptus one from Australia, which is completely bogus and not real science. The carbon filters we're using aren't carbon filters that you might be used to seeing. We're using a carbon filtration system that's used for highly combustible VOCs. We're using something like DuPont would have for paint chemical. Like, we're having real carbon, you know, crazy filtration system put in that's gonna be 100% working. It's not just gonna be like a charcoal carbon filter with an outtake fan. It's gonna be a big unit the size of, you know, like this thing.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I did read the study from Australia, and it did look like a legitimate peer-reviewed study, although I don't have a degree in chemistry. I'm very concerned about, this is a very high-quality wine grape-growing region. And we've seen what's happened to Napa Valley, where they've allowed industry into grape-growing regions, and it's just of great concern to me.
We've definitely addressed that with real chemists, and we're on top of that 100%. We still are in the business of growing grapes ourself. We're not trying to shoot ourselves in the foot and all having our buyers take it because there's a terpene contamination, but that's not even really possible. We broke into it pretty far, there's nothing on that. And we can bring you and email you literature and everything.
I appreciate my colleague's comments, however, if the client of that law firm that produced that voluminous document is satisfied, I think we have to take that client at his or her word.
Yeah, I would just, I read so much information that they presented that was convincing to me. I'd like to understand further why she's withdrawing her opposition, that's all.
So yeah, one of my senior board members has a PhD in chemistry, and he's been very involved in this whole process. That's part of the reason we went with the carbon filtration system that we did. But there is no, we can email you all sorts of literature.
And if the neighbor has had her needs met, or the lady who wrote the, you know, she removed everything, then I'm going to go ahead and think that it was met for a reason.
We went back and forth with her attorney a lot, and we definitely met their needs 100% satisfied.
Thank you.
The one other comment I have to make is I really appreciate the staff effort here. I know that Mr. Wilson has been communicating for up to a year here, very extensively, to resolve this, and I also appreciate your efforts to communicate with the neighbors and make it work.
We definitely wanna be good neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay, if you don't have any other further questions, if you wanted to go ahead with your motion?
Sure. Happy to offer a motion. I move that the planning commission find that the mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-88, applied for by North Coast Select, Inc., on property located at 1496 Bell Hill Road, Kelseyville, California, further described as APNs 017-002-02, associated parcels 007-010-24 and 017-002-01, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 13, 2022.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so since we don't have a consensus, correct? It has to be unanimous.
You must have a, it must be unanimous when you have a quorum of three.
Okay.
And is there still a point to offer the second motion?
The first one is CEQA?
Mm-hmm, the second one is the UP.
Well, the permit needs to meet CEQA requirements in order to be approved.
Right, I'm asking, since the first motion didn't carry, is there any reason to read the second motion?
No, but there would then not be action on the second motion. So there would need to be a determination by your commission on what to do with the project proposal. There is a CEQA decision.
Commissioner Fields, do you have any idea on how you would like to direct staff on your questions and your concerns, so that they can?
I am very close to approving this, being ready to approve this, but I believe that we really cannot continue to avoid an EIR. I feel like I really wanna see a full CEQA review. And if we can do that, then yeah, I'm ready to approve it. So I don't know if we are in a place legally to make that as a.
Well, we can approve it with a mitigated negative declaration if.
That's right, we can.
And now that I understand the lay of the land, I would be inclined to move to continue this item, if we can do that, once there's already been a vote on one of the motions.
Might I ask for a, I don't know, three-to-five-minute break in order for me to determine what the next steps would be in the circumstance in which the CEQA review does not pass, the motion does not pass, and you have not actually acted on the permit?
Okay, I'm showing a time of 9:58, we will resume at 10:05. Thank you. If we could just take our seats, we're gonna get this back on track. Time now is 10:09, and after council went and did a little bit of research, we'll say. Take it away, Nicole, let us know.
So just so we know we're all on the same page, I can give you some clarification on the results of your action today. When there is a bare quorum of three, a two-to-one vote is essentially a no-action vote, which effectively kills the application. It is, so even though it is no-action and not defined as a no, it is by practical effect a no. However, if that was not the intended, in the intention of your action as a commission, you do have the option of a motion for reconsideration to reconsider your last decision. So if someone went off a motion for reconsideration, there would be a motion vote. If your commission decides to reconsider, you could potentially, if this is your intention and what you would like to see done, you could ask staff, or you could direct staff for more information. So you'd be reconsidering the no-vote or the no-action vote on the CEQA review. You could then ask staff for clarification that could include things like information on why or why not, an EIR would be necessary here, along those lines, things along those lines, something you think would assist in your decision as a commission. And then you would continue the item to a date and time certain, so that staff could bring, excuse me, staff could bring the information back to you that you have requested of them. So those are your options. Thank you.
Since I'm the one who has some issues, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to continue this item.
My apologies, it would be a motion to reconsider the decision that you have just made. So it would be a motion for reconsideration, there would be a second, and then a vote. Three votes would move the motion forward. And then you would clarify with staff what it is that you would need in order to make your decision and move forward with this application. And then at that point, you could, if you choose, continue the item.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we reconsider this item at a later time, after.
No, you have, go ahead, Nicole.
We reconsider our prior action.
So there's a motion for reconsideration for today to reconsider the decision that was already made.
The two in favor, the one that was not in favor, what you're doing is you're taking back your not-in-favor, and then you're gonna say we're gonna reconsider as a whole. And then, however, you would like to, whatever questions you need to have asked, we need to direct staff to go ahead and.
Once we've determined that we unanimously want to reconsider our previous action and vote on that, then we can move to continue.
So the effect, right, so the effect of, the effect of the vote of a two-to-one with one no in a three-person commission is a no-action. A no-action means that the application and the process stops here, correct?
Okay.
If that is your intention, and that is what you mean, that is what you meant, then that would be your continued vote. You could omit, you could not, you could choose not to offer a motion of reconsideration, either you or anybody else on the commission. If, however, that was not the intention, and you wish to reconsider, you may offer one, or all of you, may offer a motion for, one of you could offer a motion for reconsideration, and that would be to reconsider the decision you had just made.
Right, I understand now.
Correct, and then, once that moves, that passes, if that passes, then you would be reconsidering what you had just voted on. And as reconsidering, one of the options is to ask for further information from staff, but you're going to have to, you would need to clarify with staff what that would be. You would need to give staff direction as to what you're looking for to help you make your decision. And then, once that is determined, then you would vote to continue the item, so staff could bring that information back to you at a later date, so that you could then use that information to inform your decision at that time.
Okay.
So right now, it would be a motion of reconsideration.
Right.
And then we can move forward.
Okay.
If that's what's intended.
Yes, I'm facing a motion to pass this, I'm not ready to do that. But I am ready to continue it in order to obtain some more information. So I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote we just made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I would now like to make a motion to continue this item. No?
In order, my apologies, staff would still need direction as to what you're reconsidering. So if you're reconsidering the item, which you are because of the vote that just occurred, you're back where you were before the motion for CEQA approval was offered. In a position where you are faced with approval or not approval of this particular project, what would you need as a commission to inform your decision on CEQA evaluation?
Yes.
For a future date, you would give staff direction now, so that they could later bring that information back to you.
Okay, so would it be appropriate for me now to address staff about my issues?
Yes.
Okay, so I have some concerns about the effect of terpenes on neighboring agricultural crops. I know very little about the subject, it seems to be evolving. I'm also very concerned about whether this project will affect hitch spawning specifically in Adobe Creek. Those are my two major concerns. I think the other things are things that I can research myself. Is that enough direction? Okay, thank you very much.
If you would not object to my perhaps adding a little layer to that?
Before you do that, Commissioner, there's something I think I should address now. While you can gain background material and information for your information, you, as commissioners, cannot bring evidence to the commission to inform your decision that the others do not have. So evidence should come from staff, it should come from the public, it should come from the applicant. You cannot present it yourself. So if you do have concerns, it would be best to express them all to staff, so staff can provide that information to you on the record at the time that you make your decision.
Okay, that's interesting, thank you. I'm also concerned about the flooding, the flood zone that it's in, and what would happen if the dam that is directly upstream were to fail? What the implications of that would be?
Are you saying it would, failing as a result of this project going forward?
No, 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 no.
Because, but then why is that question relevant if it's not related to the application?
Well, what we're doing is we're creating a use in a flood plain. And if the, I'd like to know what the likelihood of a dam failure is. I'd like to know what would happen if that happened, if that occurred. I don't, I think this would apply to anything downstream of the dam.
I just wanna kind of bring it back to application-specific, the amount of information that staff has provided us, the applicant is here. I don't want to, I understand your concerns on all the things that you have listed. I just, I just feel like it's too much of a gray area, it's too, it's a little too expand. It's not specific enough, I feel, for direction to have them go out and try to get those questions answered for you.
Okay, I guess I could be more articulate about it. I'm concerned about the cumulative fact of projects like this in this specific area.
Please.
My understanding of your concern, Commissioner, was that you wanted staff to explain why they didn't believe an EIR was necessary. And you haven't, you haven't given that direction to staff yet. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I thought you were fundamentally concerned about why there was no EIR, rather than dam failure, for example.
We have a letter from the Center for Biological Diversity that articulates pretty specifically why an EIR is needed.
In their opinion?
Well, yes.
But staff.
I'm not a biologist, but I.
But are you directing staff to come to a different conclusion, or just explain why it came to the conclusion it came to? Because why would they necessarily come to a different conclusion?
Well, then, if you're asking me to make a decision today, then I would say no. I don't see that we have enough information, I think.
I'm not asking that, I'm asking, you haven't given specific direction to staff about the creation of an EIR. You've asked about terpenes and other things.
If I may, I think if your, Commissioner, if your concerns are founded in a comment letter that was submitted, that outlined argument for an EIR, it would be reasonable, and in fact, it is required under CEQA that staff address those comments, in some circumstances, that staff, at least within the CEQA documentation itself, address those comments in relation to this project. MNDs, you're not necessarily required to insert responses to those comments, whereas you are with an EIR. But it is required under CEQA that if there is substantial evidence in the record that supports a different argument, a different outcome, that there will be an impact, that the agency address that. And if that is your concern, that this letter may have addressed, may have provided argument that would support an EIR, that you're asking staff to provide a response to that, to show why the EIR is not necessary, and that they have addressed those concerns in those comments. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes, well, it's possible that they don't exist. It's possible that I just am not ever going to be convinced that this is adequate, that this is a good idea. So I would like to give the applicant an opportunity to study the subject farther. As far as I know, the hitch do go that far up Adobe Creek, but I don't know that. As far as I know, the hitch do go that far up Adobe Creek, but I don't know that. I think further review, it's going to take further information to convince me. Let's just put it that way.
Convince you of what?
That this is not going to have a harmful effect on fish spawning in Adobe Creek.
So, this is Director Darby, if I may jump in here. I would like to have the opportunity to continue this project, to answer some of the questions from Commissioner Field in particular, and also to get with the applicant, to answer some of the questions about the mitigated negative declaration in which we reviewed in our department, and also to further look at the possibility of providing an EIR to address some of the issues regarding the hitch and the dam issues in which you are requesting. So if we can have this project continue to, maybe a time to be determined, that would be awesome, and that would be my recommendation at this time.
Thank you. Would it be appropriate for me to make such a motion, Nicole?
If your commission has outlined all of its concerns and you have expressed, and given, expressed the information you would like to see from staff and given staff direction, and you feel that everything that has been said that you needed to say as a commission, then certainly any of you could make a motion to continue the item.
Well, I would like to make a motion, as Mary Darby suggested, to continue this item to a time to be determined.
Second.
Can you say that again?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries for continuance for a date uncertain. Thank you. That being said, we'll move on to our second agenda item. Item number two is a public hearing on consideration of an amendment to Major Use Permit UP 15-15 to adopt major use permit UP 21-24 and an addendum to a mitigated negative declaration IS 15-34. The project applicant Hilltop Recovery Services Incorporated, Lori Carter Runyon, is proposing an expansion of a substance abuse rehabilitation treatment facility to allow a total maximum capacity of 20 residents to serve only women in an existing residential home to be converted as a treatment facility. The project is located at 14725 Catholic Church Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, and further described as APN 010-046-06. Go ahead. Good morning.
And so I'm going to go, so this is your, this is the planner. So I went over this, the last hearing.
I think just maybe, just going through your presentation will be good. I know that we did go through your full detailed staff report when we had this in front of us last time. But I think it would be good just to go through your report. Thank you. So the applicant is requesting a reapplication of an existing major use permit under Article 27 for a community care facility. If there is any change in the number of occupancy as previously approved, the applicant shall apply for a major use permit under this ordinance. The applicant meets this permit type for this zone and will utilize existing facilities on the property without a new development. To the north of the proposed project use is the existing community care facility permitted in 2016 under the use permit UP 15-15 located on parcel APN 10, I meant 010-046-02. The other northern parcel contained ranches with single-family dwellings. To the east is rural land and dwellings. To the west is rural lands and agricultural preserve. To the south is rural lands with dense vegetation with few disturbances that occur in these areas. The proposed 19.57 acre site is currently developed and is utilizing the existing building facility infrastructure listed in the slide and addressed in detail in the staff report. The adjacent parcel exists, existing facility under use permit 1515 that fronts the state highway is an active treatment facility, only serving men and currently allows a total occupancy of 42. The proposed expansion under the new major use permit will allow an increase of occupancy by 20 to serve only women. The project will expand and utilize the parcel to the southeast zone. The applicant has requested and received an early activation of use to allow the existing dwelling to be used as an emergency shelter for women while the use permit request is processed. The site description involves using all existing structures onsite and as described in the slide, as well as detailed in the staff report. A site visit was conducted twice on July 9, 2021, and again December 8. The photo to the left shows the existing single-family dwelling to be used as a community care facility, and to the right is an existing permitted septic system to accommodate the proposed increase in occupancy. Staff reviewed the project as concurrent with the following listed and determined that it is consistent with the Lake County General Plan, Shoreline Community Area Plan, and the zoning ordinance. The project is an expansion to an existing community care facility from an adjacent parcel north of the proposed project site. The proposed project complies with the general plan for rural lands as other typical uses permitted conditionally when it is coupled with the Lake County Zoning Ordinance Article 27.13E. Under this section, community care facility includes residential facility, residential care facilities for elderly, adult daycare facilities, home finding agency, and social rehabilitation facility as defined in Section 1502 of the Health and Safety Code. The Lake County General Plan addresses homelessness as one of the major population concerns within the housing element and falls within the category as special needs. According to the general plan, the loss of housing is usually the result of multiple factors such as chronic health pains, problem, physical disability, mental health disability, and drug and alcohol addiction, along with inability to access the service and long-term support needed to address these conditions. The proposed project involves providing treatment services for drug and alcohol patients to recovery that would otherwise result in an individual who would likely be classified as someone with special needs. The project proposal provides transitional housing and a life and safety system for women in recovery and may otherwise be homeless or without safe and clean housing. The project meets the goal. The project is located within scenic combining designation. The project is located far from plain view off of Highway 20 with dense vegetation providing a natural view along this route. There will be no development upon a project implementation because it is existing and currently meets the height requirements set forth in the scenic combining district. Therefore, it would not impact the scenic view shed, and therefore agree with Policy 3.4.4A. Policy 5.1.1F encourages the development of appropriate medical and wellness services. Currently, there is only one alcohol and drug recovery services located in the shoreline community area to address these specific needs within the community. Therefore, the county should encourage the expansion of this use permit to continue serving the growing needs within the shoreline community area, nonetheless to serve women. In this slide, staff will demonstrate how each of these sections of the zoning ordinance are met. The project zoning designation is rural lands. The proposed project is an allowable use under the zoning designation rural lands and provides a large portion of the parcel undeveloped and remote for proper rehabilitation. It meets the zoning ordinance under a use permitted in Chapter 21, Article 7.3M for those used permitted in the rural lands district with a zoning permit in Table A, Article 27. The project is located within the waterway and scenic combining district. However, the proposed project will not impact the scenic view and waterways as it involves the use of existing structures, utilities, and roads. As stated in both Article 34 and 37, the existing structure meets the intent set in both districts. All situated away from areas designated for scenic routes and waterways. Therefore, the proposed project implementation does not require any additional condition or mitigation to satisfy the elements of Article 34 and 37. The purpose of Article 27 is to allow for the uses possessing characteristic of unique and special form to make their use acceptable in one or more districts upon issuance of a major use permit. In addition to any required building grading or, and/or health permits, specifically Sections 27.13E permits a community care facility with the following condition listed in the staff report in detail in Attachment 2. The existing permitted project under a major use permit UP 15-15 is currently governed under the mitigated negative declaration IS 115-34. Per CEQA Section 15164, the lead agency, Lake County Community Development Department, has the authority to prepare an addendum to a previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, provide no substantial changes to the project would involve significant environmental effects or substantially increase the severity of previously identified significant environmental effects. Staff has reviewed the previous environmental assessment for the site and the potential cumulative effects for the new proposal to provide additional effects that were not previously identified or mitigated, and found that the project as proposed does not substantially increase any effect known nor introduce new effects that were not known at the time of the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. The proposed changes are to increase the occupancy number, expand into an existing single-family residential home on an adjacent parcel, alter the existing structures by converting to a treatment facility, and utilizing the existing structure for a new use for which a new use is no longer accommodated to, for a single-family residential home, instead a treatment facility. The existing structure was used as a single-family homes and is getting, is being converted. The project was previously approved by the Planning Commission in 2016. The project proposal for the facility is not expected to create or exacerbate which upon project implementation could be a detriment to the health, safety, moral comforts, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood because the applicant proposal integrated any potential concern in the project scope to be remediated. The applicant will make minor adjustments to the existing facility to meet regulatory compliance for local and state to accommodate the additional 20 occupants. The siding has been established and meet the adequate size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the proposed expansion. Though the expansion will result in 62 occupancy, the residents of the facility will not have access to their vehicle and will mainly be used by staff and guests. Environmental health committee noted that the applicant obtained an alteration septic permit in 2020 to accommodate the changes in use of the residents for the expansion. The applicant also issued a permit for an existing well. The project is consistent with the county code as listed in Bullet 5. There are no existing violation on the property. Therefore, the project proposal meets all of the following findings for approval. Staff recommend that the Planning Commission take the following action to adopt an addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, provided that the project is a minor technical change and is supported by substantial evidence. And that staff provided an explanation the project would not involve new significant environmental effects or a substantial increase in the severity of previously identified in the initial study. Staff recommend that the Planning Commission take the following action to approve the major use permit to expand the number of occupancy to serve women with the following findings stated in the previous slide and the staff report. Staff also recommend the inclusion of the condition of approval shown in this slide, as well as in Attachment 5, upon approval of the major use permit. And this was green sheet. Staff also recommend, yeah. The conditions are, green sheet. Staff has amended the following bullets, number five regarding, five and six regarding Caltrans. Due to the circumstances of fulfilling the need for staff in, from various agencies, staff requires that the applicant shall coordinate with Caltrans to conduct a site visit to satisfy their state regulatory requirement for road standards. That concludes the presentation. Okay, thank you so much. All right. Thank you for going through that again in such detail. Before I open it up for public comment, does any, either of the commissioners have anything for staff or the applicant that I do believe is in chambers? No? Okay, we will go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak can please approach the podium. Jake, I will check in with you for any Zoom hands here shortly.
Good morning, my name is Jackie Chernow, and my husband and I live on 14723 Catholic Church Road. It's right down from the proposed project of the women's facility for Hilltop. Since the last public meeting regarding the expansion of Hilltop Women's Facility, Hilltop went ahead and put up a sign. And the sign is at the edge of the women's proposed area, the gate of their property, and it's heading, kind of pointing down our road. And the sign says, dead end, private drive, no solicitation, no trespassing. And we're still getting people coming up the road to our home wanting to know where Hilltop Recovery Services is. And I know they're working hard at trying to resolve this problem, but we're the ones that are impacted from it. People are continuing to turn around in our orchard because they have nowhere to turn around, and the road's not big enough to accommodate two cars at one time. And the county hasn't maintained the road in years and years and years. So if the county approves this project and we continue to have, you know, the problem of these people, not clients, but customers looking for Hilltop, coming to our home, you know, we would like a, either a battery or solar-generated gate to be put up by either the county or Hilltop to prevent this from happening because it really is impacting our life. And we don't have anything against Hilltop. I'm a registered nurse that was employed by Advenisel for 22 years, and so I'm well aware of the need in the county. But we're the ones that are being impacted from this. And so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I do believe that was brought up at the last meeting, something of, like, I know that that was something that she wanted to look into further as far as...
that was something that she wanted to look into further as far as a gate. So we will we'll circle back to that. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is George McDonald. I'm an attorney with Katz, Offenriggs for the applicant. I actually prepared a fairly quick slideshow presentation on the issue of access because I think that's been one of the outstanding question marks involved about how you actually access this property. And I'd like to present that if possible. It will be pretty quick, but I think, you know, picture says a thousand words.
Absolutely. And do you have that all set up already?
I have it right here on this little flash drive.
Our director will help you.
It will be the only thing on there.
Made it easy.
I lied. It'll be the only real file on there. There'll be some ghost files that I couldn't figure out how to remove.
While we're getting that set up, Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we do have some hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, I'll take one hand for now, just a reminder to have them say their first and last name, and they will have three minutes while I get this presentation set up, please.
All right. I've given Donna Mackelwitz permission to speak. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm her first and last name?
Donna Mackelwitz. I'm from Clear Lake Oaks, and thank you for the opportunity to say my comment. The significant staff findings mentioned the report is from 2016, and knowing and seeing the newer map where cannabis applications are that are near this project, especially those coming up on Catholic Church Road and sulfur banks lamp parity cannabis expansions and on Dennis Pluse Lands, which aren't shown in any of this presentation, I ask if this location is the right fit for something as important as a recovery program housing. It's going to be totally surrounded by cannabis, and thank you for considering my comment, and that's all.
Thank you, Donna. And Jake, I'm going to bring it back to chambers so that we can get this PowerPoint presentation presented.
Are you ready?
Absolutely. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So, so like I said, I would just like to provide an overview of access about how you access this facility in real world terms to its where it's located at 14725 Catholic Church Road. The reason why this is important is because both Lake County GIS map and Google Maps have incorrect road names, so it's become quite a point of confusion. So I would just like to walk, you know, the planning commissioners through it so you don't have to go out there yourself, so you'll see exactly what we're talking about. I'd like to also point out that so this the applicant here is Hilltop Recovery Services, a California nonprofit public benefit corporation. So, right, I think it's important that we remember when we're imposing conditions such as road conditions that this is not a cannabis mogul. This is a nonprofit providing a community benefit, so they do not have deep pockets like some folks may have to improve roads and things like this. How do I go to the next slide?
Spacebar, maybe? There you go.
Oh, that. Okay, that's right. Okay. Okay, so this is a map, and you can see I put the project site right there. It's in the lower portion, 14725. That's what we're speaking about here. The other facility is located across the street. It's on a separate parcel, and it's operated pursuant to UP 1515. That is located, it has a state highway 20 address. Catholic Church Road is in the top left-hand corner coming in, and you can see there Catholic Church Road. It's county road 215. This is a county road, and that's where the access is. There's an electric gate right there where it says location of electric gate, and that provides access to this property, the private driveway for 14725 Catholic Church Road. That's the driveway that you go down and you can to come to this facility. If you see where Catholic Church Road comes in and where it goes to the left from our view, but it would be a right-hand turn if you were coming towards the facility, down that road is where Ms. Cherno lives, who she was speaking of, just so we can orient ourselves from that. So when you approach Catholic Church Road, this is what it looks like from this is taken from highway 20. That street sign says Catholic Church Road. And I this is what you travel, you know, this length right here down Catholic Church Road, again, county road to the electric gate. This is what the electric gate looks like. There's a sign. It's closed. They keep it closed for security purposes, but this is what it looks like. There'll be a better photo. Here we go. It's for the women's facility. It has a lock box on it that's been inspected by the fire department and approved, so they can get access through this as well. This is a video portion. I'm not, let's see, and it'll just kind of show you. So when you come through, and then this is down the driveway, which they've been improved with fencing and made it a nice driveway, and you go down there, and then the building towards the end is the actual facility. Whoops. So this is what you see when you get down the driveway to the facility. If you look to your right, you'll pull into the actual parking lot of the facility. If you look to your left, you'll see this road right here. So what this is, is this wasn't put in there quite recently by the applicant. This is not a road. This is for emergency fire route only, and so it's not rated for vehicles. It doesn't meet road standards or anything of the sort. It goes through the backyard and recreation area of the men's facility. There's actually a frisbee golf course right there. I just wanted to point this out because when you look on the map on Google Map, you may think, well, can't you take that road? Well, it's not a road. It maintains locked, and people play there and things. It's not the appropriate place for vehicle traffic to be coming through. It was never intended for that purpose. It was purely for fire safety because this facility, when they're located on Socrates Mine Road, knew very well that you better have two points to get out for anybody. It's very important. This is the picture of that same fire road from the men's facility. So it's always locked. Like I said, it's not meant for traffic, and it goes through their recreation yard and where they play games and softball and things like this. So this is to point it out, too. So this is Whistler Lane right here. This is Whistler Lane. Whistler Lane provides access to the existing men's facility located across the street with a state highway 20 address, which has been in operation in this location, I believe, since 2016 or 2017. The fire road, you can see it there, is what we just discussed, which was put in very, very recently after this project had been pending. Whistler Lane goes this way. This driveway ends right here and then turns into a field. These do not connect. There's trees, and there's a fence in between them that have always been there. They don't connect. Google Maps thinks that the road goes like this. It does not. In a real world geographical matter, it doesn't connect. So I spoke with Caltrans yesterday on the phone, Mr. Robertson, and he said they had some comments about improving Whistler Lane because when they looked at Google Maps, it showed that Whistler Lane connected. And he said, well, that seemed to be the most direct access. So I explained to him, well, if you go there in real life, they don't connect, and they never have. And really, this private driveway is an extension of Catholic Church Road, and that's how you get to this facility. And I think, right, Mr. and Mrs. Cherno will attest to that this is the access for the facility because people use it. So it's my understanding that Caltrans, though, they will be coming out and taking a look at this whole situation because they haven't ever done that. They were just basing it off of maps from their office wherever they are in Sacramento. So they've agreed, though, that they're going to come out, and that's why those two conditions relating to Whistler Lane were taken out. And now how it will work is Caltrans will come out and we'll meet with them and show them around so that they can understand. And they've said that if access, right, is via Catholic Church Road, a county road, then there will be no highway access issues at all. So we don't anticipate that there will be any need to improve Whistler Lane for this So I'd also like to say, so this is Whistler Lane from highway 20, and how you get to the existing men's facility, there was a question about signage on Whistler Lane, which was right here. That's been removed, so that was resolved. And again, it just does not provide access to the other facility. You can't go through there. So that was the entirety of my short presentation just about access because I think it was very important we all understood. I would like to comment about the neighbors not, you know, having folks show up at their home. So what the real issue is with that is that the existing facility for men, Google has the wrong address. So if you type in Hilltop Men's Facility, right, which has been there since 2017, for some reason, Google takes you to the home of Mr. and Mrs. Cherno. We don't know why. We've been trying to get it resolved. Google, unfortunately, plays a big role in our lives now, and it's hard to communicate with anyone with a brain over there. So we're still trying to figure this out. I mean, we're doing whatever we can, you know, whatever solution someone comes up with, we're happy to assist in that, you know, as far as it's within the bounds of what the applicant can do financially. Whether or not the county is able to put a gate across that road, I don't know because since it's a county road. However, I do know there is some procedure wherein the board of supervisors can abandon and vacate a public road and restore it to private ownership, and at that point, the private citizens who own that road can put a gate up if it has been abandoned. It's my understanding that only two people live on that road, and both of them would like this gate, so that may be a potential solution to discuss among staff and potentially the board of supervisors to see if that is something that could happen in reality. And then they could put a gate and have this road as a private road. So that is something that I would just like to suggest. I'm not sure if it's available here at all, just, you know, not, not any, it was just a general thought that could be a resolution here. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, and I'd like to thank Director Darby as well as Planner Hamm for their work on this most recently. They've really, you know, since Director Darby's gotten involved, it's we've seen a big change, I believe, toward the view about this project and getting it before the commissioners today. So I thank you all for that.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you taking the time to put together that PowerPoint. We are still in public comment. I know that Jake, you mentioned there was a couple of hands raised, so before I have any repeat comments here in chambers, is there anyone in the Zoom room who would like to speak?
Yes, we do have a couple of hands raised in the Zoom room. I also have some new phone participants. I would like to remind them that they could raise their hand by dialing star nine. I have a hand raised from Todd Metcalf. Do you want to unmute? Should have permission to speak.
I think I'm unmuted. Well, hello, commissioners. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the director of Lake County Behavioral Health Services. You know, we've partnered with Hilltop Recovery Services for many years, and we are just very, very excited for the project and also your help in moving it forward. This is a much-needed program that will provide a valuable service to our community, so I thank you, Planning Commission, for helping get this project off the ground, or maybe in this case, on the ground. So I just thank you again for your work on this. Thank you, Hilltop Recovery Services. We're just very excited about this project moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jake?
Yes, the next hand, we have a hand up from April Jambria here, too. I always mess up that name, I'm sorry.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is April Jambria. I am the Substance Abuse Program Manager for the Behavioral Health Department, set services, treatment services. I just wanted to say that, you know, we currently have a large request for women to access residential treatment. And right now, they are currently having to go out of county to pursue placement. And ideally, it is best practice to provide an opportunity for those individuals to attend services inside of the county. This is a much-needed service, and so I just, again, want to echo Mr. Metcalf's appreciation for everything that the board has done, as well as what Hilltop has continued to do throughout the years of many, many years of service in this community. So again, I thank you for everything that you have done, and I thank Hilltop for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, I have at this time one more hand raised in the Zoom room from Becky Schrenger. Becky, I have given you permission to speak.
Hi, my name is Becky Schrenger. I'm a resident of Lake County, and I'm also a paramedic in Lake County, and I see firsthand the effects of homelessness and substance abuse in all ages and genders. However, I note that we don't have many services for the female population, and it's a much-needed service. I support the project, and I also have a daughter who is staying at Elijah House. She's homeless. She's been there since September, and she's been awaiting inpatient substance abuse program. So if this facility opens, hopefully she'll be able to go get the services that she needs there. So I thank you for your consideration of this project, and thank you and have a good day.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, Jake, was that the last hand in the Zoom room?
Yes, at this time, that was the last hand in the Zoom room.
Okey-dokey. If you would like to approach the podium before I close public comment, that would be great. Thank you.
Again, my name is Jackie Cherno, and I'm totally not against Hilltop. That's not what this is about. But I don't feel that it's our responsibility to put a gate on that road and have the road abandoned or whatever by the county. I just don't think that's right. And we haven't done anything. Alls we've done is lived there for over 40-something years and raised three kids and have daughter-in-laws and seven grandchildren. And so we're not, and I'm an RN, and I'm not, I've dealt with people with these problems and homelessness and everything else, so I'm not against the project. I'm against how it's going for us. So whatever they can do, but I'm against having the road abandoned and us paying for a gate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this before I close public comment and bring it back to the commission? Okay, closing public comment. It's 10:59, and we're going to bring it back to the commissioners. Do you have anything to say, Commissioner Hes?
No, no comments.
No?
I just want to thank those who spoke on this project, Donna, Todd, April, Becky, Jackie. I hear your concerns. I feel like this is such a needed service in this community that that's going to override the road issues. I do, it appears that that all parties are willing to work together, and I'm sure a solution can be found.
Thank you, Commissioner Fields. Just to kind of echo that, I wanted to thank the attorney for putting the PowerPoint presentation together. Anybody who goes down Catholic Church Road and is looking for this facility, it's pretty easy to find. Personally, I could get lost in a box, but it's if maybe some additional signage, maybe noting the men's facility, something like that to deter any type of traffic going down to the neighboring property. I did do a drive-by. I didn't, I feel like the distance between where your where the residence is versus where the facility is, I just would like to see you guys come to some type of consensus and some type of agreement to move forward. I do feel like you guys are all on the same page, and a little bit of communication to get that taken care of and to make sure everybody's happy is the way to go. I would hate to see this take any longer for approval. The applicant has been nothing but patient, and I feel like the proper steps have been taken. taken to get a decision on this. So if anyone's prepared to make a motion.
I'd like to associate myself with my colleagues' comments and offer a motion moving that the Planning Commission find on the basis of the addendum to the initial study, number 15-34, prepared by the Planning Division, and the mitigation measures which currently exist with the project, that the use permit as applied for by Hilltop Recovery Services LLC will not have an additional significant effect on the environment, and therefore, an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 13, 2022.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, it has to be a second. Commissioner Fields, is that a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I further move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 21-24, applied for by Hilltop Recovery Enterprises LLC on property located at 14725 Catholic Church Drive, Clear Lake Oaks, California, does meet the requirements of Article 27, 27 dot 113 paragraph, subparagraph E, 51.4, and 60 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 13, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving on. Okay, we're going to take a quick three minute break today, or excuse me, the time right now is 11:04. We will resume at, we'll say, 11:10. All right, welcome back, everybody. So the time that I have right now is 11:16. I appreciate everyone's patience first and foremost. However, due to unforeseen circumstances, we are going to have to move the last two agenda items until January 27, I believe it is, 2022. That is our next scheduled meeting. I do appreciate everyone's patience staying here in chambers until your item was called. I wish I had another alternative, but as of right now, we have made the executive decision to go ahead and do that. So both of your, the two last agenda items will be right back on to our scheduled meeting for January 27, 2022. I hope to see you guys there and to get these rolling at that time. So thank you so much. I will be actually adjourning this meeting here at, wait, actually, I'm not going to adjourn it. We're going to do office.
Continuation.
A continuation. So with these two items being not being able to be presented to you, we are going to have to continue there, to continue both items. So if I can get a motion to go ahead and continue those.
I still move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to go ahead and continue these items. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again.